Welcome, everybody. I am calling to order this Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, September 30th, 2024. We're in the Nashua North Boardroom. It is 6:28 PM. We had HR run a little bit longer than anticipated and then we were able to start now. So Ms. Lamphier, can you do the roll call?
Sure.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Prin?
Here.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Darling is not here. She'll be here at 6:45. Okay. Around 6:45. All right, that's great. I'm glad she can make it. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
I'm here. And Ms. Raymond?
Here.
And we also have Warren Farley?
Here.
Thank you. And we have Dr. Andre, Mr. Pasca, and Mr. Gray in attendance. And yeah, that's it for right now. Excellent. And once you are done doing the prayer, Ms. Prin, I made eye contact with you first. Can you do the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Jumping right into the consent agenda, I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Thank you, Ms. Gilio. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This brings us up to our first public question comment period for items that are on the agenda. We only have one person in the audience, so I can guess. Gary Hoffman? Thank you.
Good evening, Gary Hoffman, 38 Perrham Street, Unit D, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm going to speak tonight about, I'm just going to ask everybody if they would approve the memorandum of understanding for teaching an extra class from the Nashua Teachers Union for 2024, 2025. We approved a very similar memorandum of understanding last year. The only change that you will notice is the middle school classes increased from 14% of a teacher's per DM rate to 17% of their per DM rate. The reason for that is, if you remember last year, one of the changes that was made to the middle schools was they moved from a seven-period day to a six-period day. So if you divide, 1 divided by 6, you get 16.7%. And Mario and I talked about that we would round up to 17%, and so that's what we did. I also know that you did consider the memorandum agreement between the Nashua Teachers Union and the secretary unit. I do hope that you do vote on that soon. That was a very good discussions between Tom Kloss and the Nashua Teachers Union, and I think we came to an amicable agreement that both sides can agree on. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. This brings us up to the superintendent's comments, so I will hand the floor over to you, Dr. Andre.
Thank you. I don't know if I'm going to actually steal a little bit of Warren's thunder, but just the first item, last week we had the Battle of the Bridge. So as of this afternoon, and you're wearing a golf shirt, so you might have a different update. So the Fall Battle of the Bridge between North and South kicked off last week and is currently tied 6-6 with two ties, but we still had JV-Golf in Varsity today.
Varsity's tomorrow.
Okay. So JV was this afternoon?
No.
Okay.
So I believe Varsity's tomorrow and JV is Wednesday.
All right. So those are the tiebreakers. So it's the President's Cup down here. So we're watching to see like who's like stroke match coming up. So it's coming down to the golf teams, which it typically does, right? No, never, right? So, yeah. So I had the pleasure of attending several matches last week, and it was inspiring to see the school spirit on full display. Our students and community take great pride in our schools, and it's always wonderful to witness. Another aspect I just want to highlight, one of our goals this year is around student empowerment. I want to take, highlight an activity going on at Dr. Crisp. Some classrooms have started classroom economics program where teachers have been informing parents to write letters of recommendation for their kids when they're looking at classroom jobs. So my child would be great at X because they excel at Y. And then the kids have to go through and kind of defend really what jobs they want to pick. So it's really, it's nice to see both parents and students getting involved in that empowerment and agency, and also for our parents to write a nice letter of recommendation for their child and what they think they're highlighting. So I think it serves a lot of great avenues kind of going on. One is, you know, this is a good opportunity for parents to be involved, to say, this is all the great ICMI kit, I hope you see it too. And for the teacher to start assigning jobs and kids to advocate on what they think they're going to excel at. So I think that's about student empowerment and student agency, and that's some of our district goals. So I really want to commend Dr. Crisp on taking on this endeavor and engaging families in a different way. I also want to recognize Principal Richard's inaugural Principal's Office video. What excites me most about this is the majority of the episode is presented from a student's perspective. Keith did a nice job asking questions, and the students kind of responded on how they felt they belonged in the school district and their feelings and recommendations. So it was nice to see our students leading the conversations, and I want to commend Principal Richard for being vulnerable in front of the camera. Eager to see what the next installment's going to be. Talking about being vulnerable, I recently met with the students with the Video Production and Marketing Department in our CTE program. We'll be collaborating on a monthly projects to promote and celebrate various aspects of the school district. During our first meeting, I was impressed by their innovative ideas and tools the students suggested to help us reach out to our broader audience. We're meeting in two weeks, and our first installment will be ready by the end of October, so looking forward to it. And lastly, just a transportation update. A new communication regarding transportation will be released tomorrow. In addition, we are closely monitoring and addressing the root causes of some transportation challenges through a daily scorecard system. The scorecard will be tracking the status of bus operations as follow. You know, we'll be noting green if the buses are on time and functioning, yellow for minor issues if it's five or six minutes late, and then red major issues such as no monitor or combined bus routes. What we're finding out right now is really working in collaboration with, for our student on what the major issues are, and we need to be aware ahead of time where they are doubling up on buses or the issues about monitoring as opposed to a scheduling issue. So we are looking to increase the communication between us and for our students, and more importantly, on how do we inform parents that a bus is going to be late. So that's a lot of the work we're working on again. We want to thank the community for being patient with us during this process, and we're hoping this system will help us quickly identify and address problems to improve the transportation for our students. So I think we were able to identify the major issues and work with a lot of the families. Close to 700 people responded on issues that they saw, whether it was dangerous bus stops, crossings, or just logisticals. So I think we're in a really good place now, and a new communication will be going out tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to give you a heads up, our student rep here has a ton of homework and college stuff to do. So if you guys don't mind, can we do student response? And then we'll do our responses after, so he can finish his schoolwork and get a good night's sleep.
Awesome. I appreciate that. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm really pleased to say that the start of this year has been extremely smooth and easy, and I want to thank our admin team for doing such a terrific job of keeping our ship afloat. I know Dr. Andrade touched upon this, but I'm also excited to announce that Battle of the Bridge has come down to golf of all things. I'm pretty sure that most students don't even know we have a golf team, but anyways, golf will determine the winner. Varsity and JV both play this week, and if North wins both, we'll win Battle of the Bridge. I will say on paper, we should win, but unfortunately, golf is not played on paper. It is played on a course, so we'll just have to wait and see the results. Other than that, I look forward to finishing out my term and seeing who will win the North election and replace me next year. And that's everything I have. Thank you.
They'll miss you, but go have fun, do your homework. Yes, the life of a senior. Thanks, Warren. Okay, so response to the superintendent's comments, I'll sort over here with Mr. Johnson.
Just that, you know, a lot of people have had concerns about the transportation. Definitely been pointing people in the right direction as I've been telling people, the problems can't be solved if the administration doesn't know where the problems are. So it seems that a lot of that has been addressed, and we'll just keep going forward with it.
Thank you. Ms. Prin?
I just want to address the student empowerment. I got to as a first time being a mom, going to Fairgrounds Middle School Open House this last week, and I was so impressed at how the kids were able to walk all their parents through the school, show where their classes were, and it was so well-run, so well-organized, and the fact that the students were actually allowed to go in with their parents and show them around was just really wonderful. I thought it was really a great, well-run, very well-organized event, and I can't wait for it again next year.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
You'll comment at this time.
Okay. Mr. Claffey? Ms. Gilio?
Thank you, Dr. Andre.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I appreciate the continued attention to the transportation issues. I know we've been getting a lot of emails and calls as well. I had someone grab me in a parking lot Friday night as I was walking across, and they were like, hey, what's up with the buses? And I literally like stopped and was looking around because it didn't occur to me that they wanted me. So, but it was great to be able to say, hey, I got an email tonight at 6:00 PM. I bet you did too. You know, why don't you check that? Do you know if the FirstView app is running at this point? I checked it at the beginning of the school year, and then with all the changes, I have not checked it again, so.
So as of right now, no.
Okay.
It is not running. We're working with First Student and Tyler Technology to go ahead and update that. I'm hopeful we'll have it updated by end of week.
Okay.
But if not, definitely next week.
All right. So for now, parents should still be using the form that they have, that we have on the website if they have an unsafe or a problem with their thing, and they should be expecting that their local school will call if there's any major delay, as we've done for years, right?
Yes, that's correct. And then everything should be updated in Aspen X2 with all of the current information, probably midday tomorrow.
And that's the message going out, is prompting families to look at X2 in Aspen in the family portal to, some of the changes might be just a different bus number. If you were on 401, you might be on 402, especially in the special education buses, but the pickup time might be the same. So just that might be some of the changes, or again, a shift on where is your bus stop? Like, so we're just, all the changes that we've made over the last six weeks are getting uploaded into X2. So those should be some of the reflections that'll come out tomorrow.
So like my students might have too. Their bus stop changed between Friday and Monday. Do we need to check again tonight to see if it will change again for tomorrow or for Thursday or?
So that's where we'll be, the upload will be tomorrow.
It'll be tomorrow. So then we check again so that they go to the right place Thursday morning?
I would check tomorrow to go to the right place Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning?
Yep.
I don't even know what day today is. Today's Monday. Okay, so check tomorrow. It might be different Wednesday. Got it. It's been an adventure at 6:30 in the morning.
Ms. Lamphier?
Dr. Andre, you always do such a good job of highlighting how the students are working to their community and everything. And so I just wanted to mention that this past weekend was Mount Pleasant's centenary, their 100-year celebration, and I wasn't able to attend because I was at work, and it was pouring out that day. So I was looking outside, I go, oh my goodness, they work so hard on this. I feel so bad. But then I heard afterwards, and I read in In-Def New Hampshire, that they had a really great day, and even though the school wasn't supposed to be open, they were able to open the school and everyone was able to go inside, and it really was a great celebration. So it was nice to hear about the school community coming together like that.
Thank you. I also want to highlight what you were talking about with the Dr. Crisp stuff. When we give empowerment to students and to families, what, and I'm sure lots of people know this, but is self-fulfilling prophecies and the external things that people say about you, you internalize as kids, and as you get older, that you become what you think you are. So if your parents are saying you're responsible, you're smart, you're amazing, and you're hearing that in school, and it's being reinforced, then you grow up to be a teenager and a young adult who thinks, I'm smart, I'm amazing, I'm awesome. So the more often we can say that to students at school and at home, I think is just the best way to grow kids into humans who are proud of themselves. So really happy to hear that. So hopefully that happens all over the district and not just at Dr. Crisp. But anyway, done with that. We are now moving on to committees, so Committee on Finance and Operations. So I will hand the floor over to Ms. Lamphier.
Okay, so before I begin with the motions for this evening, I wanted to talk a little bit about what happened at our last meeting. So before our last meeting, I took a close look at our monthly expenditure report. When I compared that report ending August 31st, the same period last year, I noticed some things that concerned me. Our overtime use was 3% more than last year. Dr. Andre and Mr. Gray explained that it is most likely because of the extra work our custodians did with opening McCarthy and also ongoing work at Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, which was great. There's some other, the other issues are a little less great. There's definitely something that I'm concerned about. So the retirement and separation pay expended as of August 31st this year was up 20% over the same period last year. We can't tell just from looking at financial reports if that is because we have more teachers retiring, more teachers leaving, more young teachers leaving, or if teachers with more experience are retiring after a long career and have a larger retirement amount. So Dr. Andre will be giving us more detailed information about that soon. My biggest worry currently is contracted services, which is line 53628 in our budget. The district has to contract some services out of district because we are unable to hire our own personnel, and we know about this. We approved the contracts earlier this summer, and the contracts are much more expensive than using our own employees. And last year it was a big problem. Luckily, we had Esser funds to make up the difference. In this year's budget, we increased the amount for contracted services substantially so we would not have the same issues. Although it is very early in the school year, we already have concerns that our new budget will not be adequate. During August 2023, we spent $34,000 on contracted services. In August 2024, we spent $235,000 on contracted services, which is 13.4% of our budget for this line item. And this year, we have no Esser funds to provide a cushion, which, and the reason why I wanted to bring this to everyone's attention is because it just shows how important it is that we, as a school district, really focus on finding and retaining our staff because, you know, they're so much less expensive than these contract services. So, and you know, because this year we don't have that cushion, it's really important that we keep a close eye on what's going on. So I just wanted everyone to know about this. And now I'm going to go on to the motions. My first motion is to approve the hiring of ARM consultants for project management of roof repairs for bicentennial, New Stiles, Fairgrounds, Charlotte, and Led Street Elementary Schools in an amount not to exceed... It says $6,000? Is that correct? Okay. All right.
That is correct. I think that was more of a FYI from Sean. He was bringing it forward because of the roof repairs that were coming.
Okay. Yeah, so that's the, that's the motion. Can I have a second, please? Thanks.
Oh, sorry, I have a question about it. If maybe Ms. Lamphier was going to answer the question before I answered it? No? Okay. So my question is, that $6,000 is the price for them to take a look at and give us a report on the condition of the roofs? Do we expect that these roofs are at or beyond their lifespan, like we found out at Main Dunstable and Bart Hill where they were vastly beyond their lifespan?
I can answer that.
Okay.
So ARM consultants have already examined the roof conditions of these five elementary schools, and in order, and some of them are in okay shape, some of them are good, some of them are bad, because each roof is divided into like a bunch of different sections.
Right. Oh, so they can fail at different times?
Yes, yes. So in order to extend the lives of our roofs, they should be inspected and repaired annually. And when they're, so they need to have like certain upkeep every year. So ARM consultants, now we're going to hire them as project managers for this work to be done by another company.
Okay. I have a follow-up question. So the legislature put some money back into the school building projects fund at the State House, but only $10 million for the whole state to fight over. Do these projects meet the criteria for at least putting in an application for some assistance?
We'll be applying for anything possible. So we will be exploring that, those options, but again, it's not a big pool of money for the whole state, so.
It's nominal.
We will be putting it on record that we are applying.
Okay.
No coin left unturned. Good. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
With that being said, I know that we had had some conversation at budget time about getting all the buildings looked at, and that was being handled by the Board of Aldermen, specifically for this year. So is this something that we want to jump and do before we get that or even ask for that or get that approved?
So I think there's two different conversations. So even with the facilities report coming back, we would still need a project manager to help us on the assessment on every year.
Exactly. I was just wondering if, because the project might be bigger or might be whatever, different than what we have talked to this company about doing, so I was wondering if this is something we should do before we get that answer or hire someone on to do this and then say, and can you do this too? Or would that be separate? Like I said, I'm not sure if it's two direct separate things, because if they're going to be looking at all the buildings, that most likely will include the roof. Maybe not. I'm not sure.
So again, to Ms. Lamphier, Ms. Lamphier's point, I think they already know the current condition, but it's going to, this company's going to help us in that project management moving forward. So when we get the facility study, I think they're just going to reinforce the condition, so.
Has there been any word on that facility study?
There's, there is talk about it moving forward relatively soon, but I don't have that officially.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. So all of those in favor of approving the hiring of ARM consultants for project management of roof repairs for bicentennial, New Stiles, Fairgrounds, Charlotte, and Led Street Elementary Schools in the amount not to exceed $6,000, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, so next is I recommend, I'm making a motion to approve the purchase of 25 business workstations in an amount not to exceed $16,345.30, and that funding is to come from a Perkins Grant.
Second.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the purchase of 25 business workstations in an amount not to exceed $16,345.30, funding from Perkins Grant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. These new microphones, I feel like I'm yelling. They're awesome. I don't like it. I don't like yelling.
Oh, I'm supposed to go next. Okay, so let's see.
Grateful for it.
The next motion is to approve the purchase of an SG3 series printer from Supplies Unlimited in an amount not to exceed $13,570, funding from Perkins Grant.
Second. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving the purchase of an SG3 series printer from Supplies Unlimited in an amount not to exceed $13,570, funding from the Perkins Grant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Now, I'm motion, I'm making a motion to approve the purchase of replacement vehicle for the driver's education program at a cost not to exceed $35,000, funding to come from the Driver's Education Special Revenue Fund, 91.2201.04149081500.
Second.
Sorry.
Well, Mr. Claffey can second it, and then you can, that's fine. And now, go ahead, Ms. LaJoy, DeJoy, sorry.
Sorry about that.
I'm just so joyful looking at you. Sorry.
So I just wanted to give an update from a transparency standpoint. So since the finance and ops meeting, the used car that they were trying to purchase actually has been sold at this point. So unfortunately, I think, you know, used cars didn't move quick enough and whatnot. So there is a new memo that we provided for tonight's meeting that we'd like to go ahead and still approve moving forward to purchase a new or gently-used vehicle not to exceed the $35,000 that was originally discussed. Some qualifications and stuff on that, we decided, I met with the driver's education director, and it just makes sense. I think at this point, they're kind of in a pickle, right, to go ahead and continue to do this. It was not something they were expecting. So we are getting money back from the insurance company. I think the vehicle they originally was going to purchase was slightly actually less than the insurance check. So we'd like to actually ask the board, if at all possible, if we can get three quotes, we can look at new and used vehicles, and then make the best decision for the driver's ed team so they can go ahead and move forward.
I'm fine with that.
So it's, does the existing motion work for that, as long as it is not more than the $35,000?
Anytime someone will shop for a used car, I will take you.
Right. Do we need any language in the motion saying that this, that you have the authority to choose from the, you know, three options or whatever? I don't really want you to have to come back here and lose it because they go so fast.
No, I think the language is fine because we should be coming with three quotes anyways or purchasing a car off the statewide bid list. So we will still follow policy and make sure we do that, and so we would have to present that with this motion as well. So I think we don't have to change the language.
So I just want to make sure I understand. We're going to, we're going to approve this tonight, and then whoever's in charge of doing that negotiating part will have the authority to go ahead and sign the contracts and make the purchase, and then finance will be advised, this is what we got. Right?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Okay, that's what I want.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving the purchase of a replacement vehicle for the driver's ed program at a cost not to exceed $35,000, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
My last motion is to approve the fiscal year 25 August transfer report.
Oh, second.
Thanks.
Comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the fiscal year 25 August transfer report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I will hand the floor over to Ms. Raymond for policy.
Great, thank you. So I did not attend this last policy meeting. I had COVID and I was at home sick. And unfortunately, I was not able to watch it on TV because they were playing a rerun of a tour of McCarthy due to some technical issues in the room. Which was really disappointing because Policy had a really robust conversation about cell phones and where to find our cellphone guidelines. And I wondered if Ms. Lampier or Mr. Poska could just give a brief synopsis for anyone else who was interested in knowing where that information was, since it didn't make it to the packet.
I think to Ms. Raymond's point, we had asked all the secondary principals to attend. I think there was, Mr. Burns was not able to attend, but he had had worked with Mr. Richard about some of the feedback from what goes on with North. We had the three middle school principals as well, each of whom kind of described what their cellphone practice was in their school. And we, really the conversation was, you know, there is verbiage in the student handbook for both the high school and the middle school that details the expectations for what the cellphone usage is or isn't. And within each of the buildings, each of the building principals felt that they have a student handbook practices in place and they've communicated this not only to their staff, but to their families as well. I think we were fortunate to have some, you know, got some feedback from some parents who were, were pleased that they had heard what the middle, the messages were regarding the cellphone usage in, in the schools. Within the idea of kind of the consequence for it, it really was kind of working with the student and the families about what those concerns were and how we can alleviate that so we can kind of focus on teaching and learning within the classroom setting. As we left with that, I think the, you know, what we heard from the, the principals was that they felt comfortable that the practice that they have in their student handbooks is meeting their needs, and they were willing to continue to work towards that. We got some feedback from the policy committee to have some verbiage within the, the handbooks, both at the high school level and at the middle school level that are more consistent. So with it, you know, if we have a transient population, the rules don't drastically change from when you go from Fairgrounds to Penachet. We have some consistency in place. So I think to, to Ms. Raymond's point, it really was a, a really good conversation and it was driven by the principals and people could hear what was going on within their buildings on a regular basis. Ms. Lampier, if I missed anything from that conversation, but I tried to.
Oh, no, no, you did great. I, I did bring up, like, some concerns about, in the high school, they're allowed to have earbuds or, or use their cellphones when they're done with their work. And Mr. Richard's response was that if there's an issue with that kind of, if that becomes a problem in the classroom and the students are disengaged when they should be working, that's a classroom management issue. And what they'd like to see is to have the teachers, if anything escalates over a cellphone, cellphone, to send the children out of the, out of the classroom and to the principal's office, and the principals deal with it directly.
So one of the questions I had wanted to ask at the meeting, but I was sick, was, at what point do, does the building principal at either the middle or high school level, because elementary kids are not typically having cellphones, at what point do, does the building principal or the teacher engage parents in this conversation? Like if we have a student who is really having difficulty managing their classroom responsibilities because of the distraction of a phone?
And I think that's really what we heard, you know, from the building principals. They're urging, you know, parents to communicate that, you know, you know, Mrs. Poska, you know, Matthew's using his phone a lot, it's interrupting his work in math class. Can we work out that way? To Ms. Lampier's point, when it becomes, when that escalates, the administrators don't want the, the principals dealing with that escalation. They want the, the principals and the administrators to address with that so they can work with it. But it goes back to that same piece. What is the issue? How can we work together to find a solution to that concern? And it is going to involve the teacher at some point, but I think it's going to be facilitated by the, the administrator so that we can have some good conversation about what's going on. I think we, to a T, we heard that from all the prin, from all the administrators that they want to work with families about what those concerns are. At the same time, we recognize that there's some safety issues that do entail cellphone usage. And that's why the parents do want their students to have cellphones. We're trying to acknowledge that, but, you know, from 9:00 to 9:55, you're in your math class and that should be your focus there. So can we focus on that aspect there? But communicate that also to the staff. I think, you know, I think there was a lot of communication that came out from Fairgrounds Middle School. And I think actually all the buildings had sent home messages to families about what those expectations were. So I think parents are aware or at least receive some communication what those expectations are. Now it's trying to, you know, equitably enforce those classroom procedures at each of the building levels.
Thank you, I mean, I think for, I, I think that there's something to be said for the skill building, because as soon as our students leave here and they graduate and they go get a job or they go to college, they have to be able to manage it. And so, you know, the hope is that this is a, a practice ground for learning those skills. But I would really like to make sure that we're not having teachers having these battles of wills with students over cellphones when we can easily call a parent and maybe have a parent be part of the solution. So, or guardian. All right, so I apologize to everyone for missing that. And hopefully there'll be a recording at some point, but I haven't seen one. So I was very upset about it. But they're in the handbooks, for anybody who's watching who wants to look them up, the handbooks are on our website. Okay, so Policy, we have a second reading tonight, which means that they're ready for a vote. So I move to approve Policy CBI Superintendent Evaluation and Goal Setting.
Second.
Okay, and just as an FYI, this is what the district has been using for several years. We just never voted on it.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think for a little bit, we wanted to have some flexibility and see if it was a, a form that worked for us, and I think it has. And if it, if it starts not working, we can readdress it, as you can most policies.
Yes, it can be changed in the future if needed.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Policy CBI Superintendent Evaluation and Goal Setting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, I move that we approve Policy CBI-F1, the Superintendent Evaluation and Goal Setting Form.
Second.
Thank you.
This is literally the form that we fill out.
Yes. Any comments or questions? What I, what I like about having these as a policy is, for people who don't understand what the superintendent does, when you look at all of the criteria that we have to think about what you do, and you're like, oh, why, why does he, why is he held responsible for this? Because you're held responsible for everything. And we have to keep track of it and we have to monitor it and we have to, you know, praise it. So I think it's interesting, people can go online and look it up and, and, you know, reacquaint themselves with what somebody at the top manages all day, so.
The other thing I like about this particular form is that it has the legal references embedded within the form. So when it talks about, you know, the superintendent is responsible for fiscal management, it tells you exactly what part of state law says that that's his responsibility. It's not something that, you know, will be changing as the board changes. The law is the law.
Right. Right. Okay, are you, have you enjoyed it?
Yes.
You can give us feedback, but only if we approve it. Okay, so seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of approving Policy CBI-F1 Superintendent Evaluation and Goal Setting Form, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, great. So we have one policy on the first reading that is still open for discussion. And that is, we want to rescind Policy DK time and effort because it has been fully incorporated into another D policy that we have already approved. This is just kind of like hanging out there with redundant language. So, next time.
Second, I think, do we?
No, next time.
We have to wait, because now we do the two readings. Just bringing people's attention to it in case they want to make a public comment.
I thought you were making two different motions there, talking about two different policies.
Nope. And I don't remember when our next meeting is, I'm sorry. In two weeks?
17th.
15th, oh, your committee meeting.
The 14th is a holiday too, so things got.
Things are all pushed over, so I don't remember. We'll find out.
Okay.
More fun to come.
Only Heather would think Policy's fun. Okay.
Speaking of fun.
I know, I, I like Policy too, but we're bouncing over to the more fun meeting, CNE.
Amazing.
So Mr. Claffey is going to give us the elevator speech on it.
Two weeks ago, we met and we had a wonderful presentation by Mr. Richard, South Principal, and Ms. Paris, Assistant at North. They presented us with a number of data. Graduation rates were at, just about at the state average. And I won't give you all the numbers, but I guess if you wanted me to email the presentation, I could do that. Graduation plans from the two high schools, athletics participation, AP scores and enrollment, CTE offerings and enrollment, SAT scores from the two high schools. And that was pretty much it. We also recommended that Policy IL be rescinded, and I think that was passed along to the policy committee.
I don't know, but we'll put it on, or we'll put it on the agenda next time.
That was IL, and then no changes were made. We recommended no changes to ILBA and BDEC.
Those should come on the agenda.
And I believe Dr. Andre, our next meeting will include presentations on middle school data.
Yep.
Ask a question? Sorry, because I was also sick and at home for that one. Do we still have the most AP courses in the state and the biggest CTE program?
I know we have the biggest CTE program, I, I have to.
Two years ago, we were tied with Wyndham for the most offerings of AP.
I would have to double-check on that.
Point of pride.
I'm sure we have the highest scores. And that was part of the presentation, the percentage of students that get three or better was 80. Does that sound right, 80%, something like that?
Well, that's really high compared to the state average.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's fantastic. Well, thank you for that, Mr. Claffey. I would like that presentation, if you want to email it to me. Is it in there? Okay, thank you. Okay, now I will hand the floor over to Ms. Gilio for Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you. I'm making a recommendation to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
Second. Thank you, any opposed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. The order is a little different here than the order in which we addressed them in the meeting, but I'll go with the order that's in the agenda for the, for this current meeting. So I make a recommendation to approve the personnel recommendations of September 30th, 2024.
Second. Second. Thank you, any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations presented September 30th, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
What's next, okay. Yeah, my computer isn't working tonight, so I apologize. So next, we have, we, I, we have a recommendation to approve the administrative recommendation of September 30th, 2024. The recommendation is to elect Lennox Br, Bannon?
Bannon.
Bannon to the position of Elementary Special Education Coordinator effective October 15th, 2024, at an annual salary of $84,456. He was here tonight with, with Mr. Alexander and both of them spoke to this. So we agreed that, that we would like you to approve this. There's a second.
Second, thank you. Comments or questions?
I just, once again, I'm impressed with the resumes of the people that are coming forward. Mr. Bannon has extensive experience in a wide variety of settings, and I just thought that was great.
Okay, any comments, any, any follow-up? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the administrative recommendations for Lennox Bannon from September 30th, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, we have a recommendation to approve the Central Registration Project Manager Job Description. I don't know, Dr. Andre, do you want to do a brief?
Yep.
I'll second it. Thank you.
Thanks, so this position is a temporary position. It serves two purposes. One, as a district, we are looking at developing a central registration center so that it's more convenient for our families to enroll in our district. Currently, a, a family of this, three children, the family, one elementary, middle school, and high school age, there's three different places that, that family may have to visit, which can be burdensome. The second factor of the central registration is also to clean up some of our data. So it would be one point of, one point of contact to enroll students, make sure the data is accurate going into the, the system. One of the things that came out of the Department of Justice is that just how all over the place the data was, wrong names, wrong origin of birth, just wrong information. So we want to clean that up. This person in this position, again, will help us do some project management and the research behind the scenes so that we can open up a, a registration center. Right now, as, you know, we go through HR and we see all the positions that we're down, whether it's admin, secretaries, we need a point person, and this person will be that point person. Instead of coming forward as a outside contractor, we're just going to put, put forward a job description.
Thank you. Also, I think it's important to note that the funding for this, it will be happening from a previously unfilled position. So it will be, at this point, no additional cost to the district.
Correct, yep.
So.
All those in favor of, I don't know what I just did to my computer, hold on. Oh, I, sorry, I got it. All those in favor of approving the Central Registration Project Manager Job Description, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, next, we have a recommendation to approve the ELL Screening Specialist Job Description.
Second.
Anyone like to comment on that? Dr. Andre?
Yeah, just a little, so this is a screening specialist that would help the ELL department at certain parts of the year in order to screen students who are newly enrolled in, in the district. I can give an example at the beginning of the year, when we have new enrollments, we only have a certain amount of days in which we have to do the screening. So if there's a large number, we might not have the personnel. Or it could be the director, the assistant director, providing those screening. And again, it's just time management. This would actually, again, help expedite the process of welcoming families into the, into the district and providing the necessary supports. It also came up, will we need this in the future? It kind of goes in conjunction with the, the position prior that the Central Registration Project Manager would be doing some of that research so that we could fully staff our central registration center.
This would be a part-time position.
Correct.
And Mr. Gray made it clear that the funding is already there, so thank you. Any other questions?
Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the ELL Screening Specialist Job Description, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, next, that's why our meeting ran over tonight, we had a lot. Next, I'm putting forth a recommendation to approve the Human Resource Generalist Job Description. And there will be a, Dot Levick is retiring again, but for real, from, from HR. And so this is kind of upgrading a little bit of what she's been doing as a part-time employee these past few years. So Dr. Andre, do you want to speak to it?
You hit it perfectly. So it's just formalizing a lot of the work that she was doing in a job description. We're sad to see her leave for the second, third, or 18 years of. We're sad to see her leave for the second, third, or eighteen years of, of the retirement, but she's been a wonderful resource. But again, tonight is just really solidifying or codifying a job description of all the work that she did.
Second. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Human Resource Generalist Job Description, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Finally, there's a recommendation to approve the Webmaster Social Media Coordinator Job Description, which has been changed a little from the position that was posted during the summer. And, Dr. Andre, you spoke eloquently about it earlier, so do you want to talk about it a little bit?
I'll second.
Oh, sorry.
So, yeah, so this position is, as mentioned, is a replacement of the Director of Communication. When we've interviewed for the Director of Communication, we thought we had a wonderful candidate. But just the general pool was really, at a director level, of people who were talking about their teams and other people doing the work. What we really discovered is that we need somebody to roll up their sleeves and, you know, do a lot of the, the webpage design, the social media, the chief storyteller. So this job description is just a lot more detailed on communicating the urgency of this person doing the work. Right now, for the Webmaster, we do have an RFP out on updating our webpage. So nineteen different schools, all the sites behind it, needs to update our content and then make sure that our website's ADA compliant. So that's going to be a huge undertaking. In part of the connection with the Social Media Coordinator is a chief storyteller. So between our websites and social media, how do we get our message out and all the positive things going on? So the, this person will be helping us do with the storytelling, but also train and provide professional development at the school level on how do we get out of social media? How do we use our webpage more effectively? So again, we're looking for, in this position, someone who's much more hands-on.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Webmaster Social Media Coordinator Job Description, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
That's, that's it for HR tonight.
Okay, we have no unfinished business, but we have plenty of new business. So I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
The first recommendation is to approve the MOU with Harbor Homes of Nashua, New Hampshire for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll make the recommend, I'll make the motion, so I move to approve the contract so that we can discuss it. I just have lots of questions.
I'll second it. Start questions.
Do you want, yeah.
Oh, you want me to dive in? Okay. So, so I was reading the contract, and it sounds like this is very similar to what we did with the Youth Council before the Youth Council went out of business. But I just want to make sure that this is a circumstance where we're providing space, but parents are doing all of the signing of releases, and we're, the student's privacy is maintained. So it's, we're providing a location, but we're not actually providing any type of mental health services to students, and we're not allowing information about the fact that they're receiving mental health services to go beyond that space.
Hundred percent correct.
Okay. And so if, for example, the school teachers or guidance counselors identify a student, how does that work? Do they contact, does the school contact the parent? Or does the school contact Harbor Homes?
So they work in conjunction, so it's working with families first, and then, then looking for available resources.
So this is only for, for families where the parent or guardian has opted, it has asked to go forward with the service, right? We're not going to be providing services unless a parent has said a hundred percent yes. Okay.
I know Harbor Homes usually has a policy where they only work with families, like for their specialized care. They only work with families that receive, like, their PCP services through them. Are they waiving that for this, or would the families have to look at switching their PCP to Harbor?
Yeah, so that might be a conversation, like, we won't negotiate that, but that's, again, with Harbor Homes, we're providing a space and some resources, but that might not be the right resource for certain families.
But we, we're also doing this with Greater Nashua, so this is just expanding the amount of opportunities that are provided within the school. I believe you do have to have a PCP with Harbor Homes in order to get med management and, and counseling. So if it's something that is already probably working within the family, then you would make the referral there first. So I'm sure the guidance counselors will, will be completely brushed up on, on the nuances that we all know about in regards to community mental health and all the nuances of it, so.
What kind of overview do we have of any therapists who are not under the Nashua School District umbrella that work for, say, Greater Nashua or Harbor Homes? When they come into our schools, the parent's expectation, obviously, is that, you know, the kids are equally safe, no matter who they're being seen with, as long as they're in that building. Do we do any supervision of any kind? Any oversight?
So there's, again, in the MOU, there's terms around the oversight and what it would entail for termination. So we do have conversations with the agency partners, so that's on page three of the MOU.
I understand that. I ask these questions because the people watching don't have these questions. And I also know that.
Yep.
I know that if families are aware of how much supervision is or is not happening, that may change their opinion on whether they have their child receive services in school or not.
So just along those terms, our building principals are very keen of who's in their position, in their buildings and relationships going on, so. Harbor Homes was in the district last year, so again, just kind of formalizing this, this process. But I just, not getting into, it wasn't this situation, but just this week, a building principal said, hey, there's an agency coming in, you know, I don't like the way this person's talking to people in the hallway and X, Y, and Z. We had a conversation with the agency, and right away. So our building principals are very aware of who's coming through those doors and, and appropriate interactions.
I mean, to be clear, I think programs like this are necessary. I love them. I want to see them everywhere. I don't mean to sound like I'm putting it down in any way. I just want to make sure we're covering every base possible, especially when we're talking about some of our most emotionally vulnerable. And do we do anything like their, their fingerprinting or HR, any of that with them?
So that's.
Or does the contract bypass that need?
So that's part of anybody who comes into the district needs to have a background check, whether it's the agency collecting the fingerprints or we're doing it. So I just bring it up the MOU to say who's actually responsible for that. But anybody coming in, there needs to be a background check, again, whether it's the agency's responsibility or our responsibility.
Awesome. Thank you.
And just to highlight, they are coming in, working under some sort of licensure. So I know there's, there are always opportunities for people to skirt around and, and do nefarious things, but there's the licensing, the agency, the school. There are.
Fun fact time, guys. I just had my SAM training done, which is Sexual Abuse and Molestation Reporting. And the top three positions that pedophiles choose are therapists, schoolteachers, and police officers. So I feel that it's important that we always ask these questions many times over until we know for sure that the people working with anyone's child is safe. But, and unfortunately, I wish that I could say every teacher, therapist, and police officer came with a badge that said that they were safe, but it's not always the case.
Yeah.
So licensure is wonderful, however.
Yeah, there's, there are stories everywhere, and, and obviously, safety of children is paramount, and we will use all of the resources that we have to ensure safety. And if somebody's going to be a bad person, they're going to be a bad person.
I say, speaking of, we have a policy that I would love to see come back in front of us about what kind of recommendation we give individuals who may or may not have been accused at some point or another. And I would love for us to, now that I understand the law is a lot better, I would love to be able to dive into that again.
All right, shoot me an email. We'll put it in the queue.
I'll do it right now.
Okay, so seeing no other comments about the Harbor Homes MOU, all those in favor of approving the MOU with Harbor Homes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
The next recommendation is to approve the MOU with the Traveling Tooth Fairy, Fairy's Sailing Smiles Across New Hampshire for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I will make that motion. I love this organization. This makes me very happy.
Ms. Daniels Williams is seconding. Only if she wears those fairy wings every time she goes.
Got to wear the fairy wings.
I actually think, I have to check my calendar, but I think we have a meeting or kickoff on Wednesday of this week. Sorry for checking my calendar right here, but maybe it's tomorrow. We have, at Led Street at ten o'clock, we will be having a little kickoff celebration. So we're really happy to, I know last year, we were having conversations about where to find funding, and I was happy that we were able to secure, secure funding through some outside agencies. So really looking forward to continuing this partnership through this MOU.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the MOU for Traveling Tooth Fairy Sailing Smiles Across New Hampshire for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next recommendation is to approve the MOU, the Teaching an Extra Class for the Nashua Teachers Union for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As Mr. Hoffman said earlier, the only change is at the middle school, changing the increase of the percentage and the dates. So I think this mutually benefits both the administration in the NCU and, more importantly, our students.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions?
I have a, go ahead. So I have a question about this, because, you know, we're paying, we're going to be paying the teachers extra money because they're taking on extra work, by doing an extra period. And we were given the information in the memorandum about how much extra they would be getting a day. But we've had some discussions behind the scenes about adjusting the pay of our par educators. And in that case, we were given information about how many paras would get extra money, how many days there were in the year, and how much it would cost the district. And I don't understand why we weren't given the same information in both cases. It's both an extra cost to the district, and it's both important because our kids need these extra services and because our, the people that we employ are doing extra work. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that when we discuss this for the teachers tonight, which I definitely believe that they have, at a meeting further down the road when we discuss the par educators, that we, we, like, take into account when looking at the figures and the facts, that we understand that they're both doing work that we need for our students. And that's.
Okay. Did you want to speak to that or anything?
No.
Okay.
So, sorry.
Ms. Raymond?
My question was about costs, and do we know, because I don't remember, and I tried looking it up over the weekend, and I failed to find it in the budget, what the cost of this was last year? I should have emailed you, but I was very busy today.
I don't have the costs. I would have to research the total cost. And again, I think it's the anticipation if the teachers are taking on an, an extra period. So the beginning of the year, it's a little more fluid. Again, I think we, we can run those numbers of how many teachers. It's mostly at the high school, who's taking the extra classes, maybe at the, I'm trying to think if there's any teachers. There might be two teachers at the middle school level, but there's not, there's not many teachers. At the, at the middle school level, there's more at the high school, who might be a math teacher taking on an extra Algebra One class, but we can get those numbers and run it for you.
Right, and generally, it's because we didn't have to hire, or we couldn't find a sub, and so we're not paying a sub.
Or we couldn't find a math teacher for the year, and so in order, instead of.
Canceling the class.
Canceling the class, teachers are stepping up and teaching on an extra period.
Okay. I just, I'd like to know costing, and I'd like to know frequency, just so we can keep an eye on it. I don't want to end up in a situation where we are supplementing chronic staffing shortages by having the staff that we have taking on extra and potentially having burnout.
So just, in the MOU, it talks about defining what the extra class is. So that's, you're taking on Algebra One for an extended period of time. It's not, Mr. Poska was out on Friday, and I'm covering the class. It's someone else is out for a leave, or there's a vacancy in that position. So it's a different formula. So it's not a day-to-day sub. That's actually, we're speaking with Mr. Hoffman, we, like, there's past practice on, on a rate. If you're just covering a class instead of sending a hundred kids to study hall, there's a different rate for that.
Okay, so this is actually taking on.
An additional.
An existing class that is needing a long-term solution. Okay. I'm glad you said that, because I didn't know, understand that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the MOU for the Teaching an Extra Class for the National Teachers Union for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next is a recommendation to approve a $10,000 grant award from across New Hampshire for storage and program materials for the Twenty First Century Extended Day Program.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And this is for storage and program materials?
Krista, give a little bit.
Yeah, so it's additional storage and program materials. It was a donation that was given forward. They could buy anything from, like, some of the supply drawers to pens and paper or certain folders. And the Twenty First Century is extremely excited to have it. I think with just some additional storage and some of their supplies that they're able to purchase for their program, they would really appreciate if we could accept it.
Yes. Any comments or questions? Ms. Lambier?
I was curious about what exactly Across New Hampshire is, and so I looked it up, and it's a program funded by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services and Head Start, dedicated to supporting out-of-school time. So they actually provide a lot of programming, leadership, a leadership institute, and communities of practice for, for people that work with out-of-school time kids. And I was, I thought it was a great program, and I wasn't sure if, if we know how many of our, the people that we employ at Twenty First Century, or if the volunteers as well are eligible. So we didn't know how many people are taking advantage of the services offered through Across New Hampshire. Do you guys know that?
I don't have it off the top of my, like.
You guys don't know? Okay, so.
Yeah, I can get back to you.
I, I'm just hopeful that people are, because it just seemed like such a great, a great resource for, for anyone that's employed in Twenty First Century, because I know that they really work hard to do the best they can for our kids, and any support that they can get is good.
My understanding from the, talking with Jeanneel, it's, this is not something they received last year. So she was extremely excited to just get some additional supplies and the leadership materials and stuff, too.
Excellent. All right. All those in favor of accepting the grant from Across New Hampshire for Storage and Program Materials for the Twenty First Century Extended Day Program, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So the next recommendation is to accept the donation of two printers from Rudden Industries of Nashua, New Hampshire, valued at approximately $8,000 for the CTE program at North, North and South.
Ooh. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh oh.
Go ahead.
Ms. Print.
Oh.
Of all the times to be in duplicate with what we're saying.
I just had a question about the printers. So I saw the picture, and they look really big, what are they printing for? Is it like poster-sized stuff, or maps, or?
Maps.
Well, I used to work in a business at a, a building and codes office years ago, and we had a big, like, it's like this big, and you'd use it to print out plot plans, and that's what I always think of now.
So that's exactly it, so whether it's in the graphics department, so it's for big sheets of paper.
That's exciting.
I did ask the question if there was going to be an additional cost to us in the future. It does sound like we received some papers, and some ink and everything to go with the printer, so based off of the CTE team, we should be good for this year, maybe something to look at next year, building into the budget.
Okay. Right, because I know at one point, we were, we were purchasing materials, and it came with the tech support, so if someone like me goes near a machine, it breaks, which is why you need somebody to come in and fix it. I'm assuming that doesn't come with this, so if it breaks, then we get to, the CTE kids get to practice their printer fixing skills.
Yes.
And finding where that jammed piece of paper is. Right?
Yes, I did remind them, this is not under our printer contract that we do have, so once they kind of are done with our livelihood, you know, we're going to make a business decision at that point.
Yep. I've just, I've cost my work a lot of money. Ms. Daniels Williams?
Does these printers coincide and work well with the printer that we just got? No, they both are going to print like maps and posters and everything over for the CTE. The one that we just approved, sorry, there's, yeah, the one that we just approved for the CTE, it, we've talked extensively about it, so.
Yeah, so according to the director, it's, they'll be working, there's no conflict between the two, but it just gives us more resources, and this is a nice community donation.
And we can share the paper and everything.
Well, I'm not that specific if it's the same roll of paper, but, so we'll check into it, but this is a, a great donation from a community partner.
Really kind.
Yes. Seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of accepting the donation of two printers from More Than Industries of Nashua, New Hampshire, valued at approximately $8,000 for the CTE program at NHS North and South, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Can, we need to write a thank you for that. You're, that's you, Ms. Daniels Williams.
Yay.
Yes.
The next item is more informational, in your packet, you have a memo from Director Alexander regarding the tuitions at Brentwood Academy. Since Nashua assumed the responsibility of the Brentwood Academy eight years ago, we've maintained a consistent tuition rate. During this time, we made significant investments to our facilities, and our staffing, including purchasing and renovating a building, hiring a full-time social worker, a part-time school psychologist, and adding two additional full-time teachers. So what we're looking at is a 10% increase in the tuition over the next two years. The current tuition rate is $230 per day, equating to $41,400 per year. Next year, we'll be increasing to $257 per day, equating to $46,260 per year, and 25-26 increase into 285 per day, equating to $51,300 per year. And Mr. Alexander has been in contact with our, sending districts to us, and this is a figure that, that's competitive with other specialized schools.
Ms. Raymond?
What's the current enrollment at Brentwood? I know it varies quite a bit during the year, but what is it now, and how many of the students are out of district, from other districts placed here?
Um.
I know, I gotta start emailing you, but I was in Concord all day, and I just
Yeah, yeah. I think there's 25 students right now, and I think there's eight students that are on a district, one as far as the seacoast area, that commutes over an hour a day.
Wow. And do the students who are coming from other districts, and I guess our students as well, do we see them coming in and out of the program during the year, or is it typically that once they come, they stay until the end of the year?
Yeah, typically, they're, once they enroll, they stay with the program, not only for a year, but it could be up to four years.
That's a long commute for four years.
Yes. Get a lot of schoolwork done on the bus.
And again, just, it's, again, more informational, you know, there is a special revenue account that comes in with these tuitions.
And just, sorry, follow up on that, so the program is kept at 28?
So with Franklin Street, we, we have potential to grow. So we've had conversations on, how do we grow with the right amount of staff? So we don't want to grow too fast and not provide the services that the students need, but we're thinking it could be up to 40 students at Franklin Street.
Wow, that's significant.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a large space up there.
Would we need, we'd need to like double the staff at that point.
Well, that's where we're looking at, again, if we're looking at the services, how do we pay for the services?
Okay. Do you need a motion?
No, that's more informational. Either way, and so the, oh, you want it back. The last is a recommendation to approve the NASIS agreement dated July 1, 2024 through June 30 of 2027. And then we can answer some questions once we get a second.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey.
You want to give some high-level highlights of the?
Please.
Yeah, well.
Thank you. I was going to say, you're going to steal my thunder. So a three-year contract is what was negotiated, so in year one, or this current year, we're giving NASIS a 4% increase. Just a little bit of clarity there, in years past, I guess the NASIS contract has taken a little bit of a, has not received the same percentage as like the non-affiliated folks, so we felt like this year, it made sense to bump them up to 4%, where in years past, they've only been right around 3%. Again, talking about, you know, hopefully keeping our staff, our dedicated staff that are here, plus market data. Next year, it would be a 3.5% increase for all of the staff in NASIS, and then in fiscal year 27, a 3.5% increase as well. Just one thing to note, you'll see that further down on line 23, there is slightly more of an increase in fiscal year 25. We did have a few employees that, because of their duties and responsibilities, did get a multi-step increase. And then because of health insurance costs and whatnot, we do see the bottom increases slightly higher year over year.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So I have a question about some of the red lines in the contract. So under 2.2 on page 5, you've added full-time employment, and then are there any part-time employees in NASIS?
There are.
There are, okay.
So we currently have a .6 Director of Title 1.
So then my question is, how does that impact the accrual, because I couldn't find something else. I found over on page 5.1, how, how much of the school year you have to complete in order to be eligible for the, the step increase, but I didn't see anything about if you're a part-time employee, how that impacts the other accruals, like your time off and.
So 7.2, there's a new phrase in that, part-time employees in their percentage, so
Oh, good, sorry, I was skipping it.
Yeah, so we addressed it in certain areas, so
Oh, there it is, okay.
So we fully recognize if there was going to be a part-time person, that there would be percentages on those accruals.
Okay, thank you. This is why I ask these questions, because it's a long contract to read.
It is a long contract. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the, oh, hold on a second. I was toggling back and forth between things, I should just print things out, and then I would look more with it than I do right now. On the motion to approve the NASIS agreement dated July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
And lastly, looking for a recommendation to approve the MOU with the NCU Unit C Secretaries' Unit.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Comments or questions?
Oh, wouldn't that be public, after we vote? And does it have to go to the alderman? Because it doesn't really have a cost item, but other things, like, I don't know, I just got all tripped up, because this one goes to the alderman, right?
NASIS will go to the alderman, this is a MOU, so.
The MOUs don't, okay, great.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the memorandum of agreement with the NTU Unit C Secretaries' Unit, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. That's all you got? Took up quite a chunk of our time, Dr. Andre. Liaison reports, we had JSSBC, Ms. Gillio, would you want to speak?
Yeah, I just have a few things. We met last Thursday night on the 26th. The most exciting news is that on October 10, at 3:15, there will be a ceremony at McCarthy. So, and I believe, Dr. Andre, that the public's invited to attend, and so there will be information coming forward for that, so it's very exciting. In, in the renovations going on at Main Dunstable, they are going to need to replace the elevator, which turned out to not really be a surprise, but, so that's, that's going to have to happen. The McCarthy area outside the courtyard, near, outside the cafe, the courtyard, they did not include furniture for students to use outside the caf in the courtyard, so they did approve more furniture, very durable, six tables with benches to go there. So that's going to happen soon. McCarthy, there's still a few punch list items, but they're getting there, and they have been looking at the traffic issues, there's been a few issues, mainly with parents traveling with their students. And let's see, at Penachuck, the rooftop work is completed, and they will finish with the dehumidifying system, it'll be fully functional by the spring. And at Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, they've moved into Phase 4, so there are more classrooms available. And both the vestibules there are functioning fully, the security vestibules, which is good. And next, they're going to be working in the music and art, and then in November, they'll work on the gym. And at Dr. Crisp, there was a temporary certification of occupancy dated September 5, but they will be finished, and for a final certificate of occupancy by October. The sidewalk outside was to be finished last weekend, and so everything should be done by, I'm not sure what date in October, but that has to do with the security vestibule there, so, and that's it.
Excellent, thank you. No other liaison reports, right? We have Ed Council in two weeks, on the 16th, and then we do have to start talking about negotiation teams, so if you guys are interested in joining, please email me. We need to put them together. We do have to meet during the day for these meetings, so it needs to be somebody who's a little bit flexible with where they can be before 4 o'clock. Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Next meeting, is it on Monday, Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, or is it on Tuesday?
It's the 15.
It's the 15, just because the, it says Monday, October 15, which are not the same day.
No, it's not. Since that meeting is on, on Tuesday, October 15, I have a commitment with my other job, so Ms. Raymond, if you don't mind running the HR meeting that night, and I will miss all of you, but I will be actively engaged elsewhere.
I'm not going to be able to make it either. I am going away and foolishly planned it back at 6:10 that evening, so I
So you could be a little late.
I mean, if, if you guys don't mind me calling in as I'm driving home, I could do that, but I know that, I know that it would mean a lot, a lot of extra work with the, with having to have go through each vote. I was saying, instead of calling in on my way here, I listened to it the whole drive here from my other job, that way when I walked in, I would know what we were talking about, and everything else that had been said. Maybe I can do that, then. That'd be cool, actually. Yeah, thank you, Christine.
Ms. Darling? Ms. Raymond, would you mind clerking that night, too?
Sure.
Sure, unless somebody else wants to try it, it's super fun, totally recommend it.
But you're so good at it.
If somebody else wants to try it, they can do it. Okay, so this brings us up to our final public comments. Mr. Johnson, I appreciate your
Running.
Who is this? This is, just kidding, Gary Hoffman.
Gary Hoffman, 38 Perham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, I'm also the president of the Teachers Union. Thank you, Ms. Bishop, for mentioning our negotiations, we have three contracts to negotiate, the American Sign Language interpreters, the paraeducators, and the teachers. In fact, on the teachers' contract, November 30 is the deadline for our first meeting, so we do have to come up with a schedule soon for these. Secondly, I would like to thank Ms. Lampier for mentioning the paraeducators. I have an ask, as I sent all of you an email, I would like an item put on the October 15 meeting. Last year, the February 28 meeting, this board approved a memorandum of understanding that paid paraeducators and special educators in our intensive needs program who were experiencing staff shortages. For the paraeducators, it was an extra $25 a day, for the special educators, it was $35 a day, and it was only if they were having a shortage in the intensive needs program. You know, this program, you know, when I first started teaching in 2003, it didn't exist in Nashua, we actually used to pay tuition for many of these students, and it was a tremendous cost to the district. This program saves us quite a bit of money, but I, I think that with these programs, when they don't, are not fully staffed, I think the people working in them, and we spent, we approved a lot of funding today, this, this group should be recognized. You know, I have a personal experience with this program at Fairgrounds Middle School, where I worked for most of my tenure, we had an intensive needs program, and I do remember watching the paraeducators, they had to do a lot of personal care, changing diapers, cleaning, this isn't like, you know, type of work, you know, when you're changing a baby's diaper, it's hard, tough work, and then when you're down paraeducators, it might be, you know, the majority of your day. And I, I think, you know, an extra $25 a day for these paraeducators who are doing that really tough work, they might only be earning about $17 an hour, puts them up about 20, is really the least we can do. So I would at least like a discussion about it on October 15, you know, we're open to different numbers of, if there's nothing else that can be done, but we really, I feel, need to do something. So I would at least like a discussion about it on October 15th, you know, or open to different numbers of, if there's nothing else that can be done. But we really, I feel, need to do something. This is a group that we really need to take care of, because they take care of our most vulnerable students. So I'm asking, October 15th, someone's brave, please put it on the agenda. Any board member can, according to your policy, seven days' notice to the superintendent. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me. I did a listening session for our special educators a couple of weeks ago, and they all said that this was needed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Can we add it tonight? From board member?
Yeah, email it to us. Okay. Brings us up to board member comments. I'll start over here, because I, I put Mr. Johnson on the spot first last time. So Ms. Lampier, go ahead.
So Ms. Raymond mentioned that we went to see a screening of a film called The Kids We Lose last weekend, and it was about restraints and seclusion, and about how, one way of going about cutting down on restraints and seclusions. And the thing that struck me the most was after the movie, we had a discussion. There was a panel, and on the panel was a teacher from Vermont, who had also taught for quite a while, um, down somewhere in the south, maybe the Carolinas. And he said that when he started his career, he did a lot of restraints and seclusions. And he thought that was just what you did, this was how it works. And, um, then at some point in his career, he learned about the methods used by Dr. Green. And he stopped using restraints and seclusions so much. And he realized that he got hurt when he was doing restraints and seclusions more than he was. He's never been hurt since he stopped doing them. And he said that one of the things, one of the most important first steps in stopping restraints and seclusion is for a board to set that as their intention. That just saying that we don't really like restraints and seclusion, and we want to work towards ending them in our district, can make a big difference. So, um, it's just something that I hope that we can all think about moving forward and, um, you know, and try and figure out the best way to go about doing this. Because the, the movie that we saw was very moving. And, um, the kids that were in that movie that went through restraints and seclusion and were traumatized and re-traumatized and re-traumatized, deserve better, and every kid does. So, um, thanks for bringing me. It was really, um, it doesn't sound like a fun night, but it was. So, um, all right, thanks.
Oh, hey, my thing isn't working. Oh, there it goes. Maybe, that's what it is. So, yeah, as Ms. Lampier said, it was a, it was, for me, it was a difficult night. It was a difficult night. And so, as many of you know, I also serve in the State House, and I'm on a bunch of study committees this year. But one of the study committees I'm on is on HB 1269. And HB 1269, um, is legislation that would require videotaping of all restraint and seclusions in all public schools in New Hampshire, which I'm personally opposed to. But I've been listening to quite a bit of testimony over the last two months about it. We meet again in a couple of weeks. It is too late for this session, for that to go forward. But there are legislator, legislators who are planning to write legislation for next session. And they're debating in this committee whether or not we should be putting video and audio recording in special education classrooms, if we should be putting them in our restraint rooms, or if we should be having teachers with our body cameras. I personally think that the solution to this is to really look at child development, to look at our staff, and make sure that our staff have the support that they need and the professional development that they need to de-escalate situations so that it doesn't lead to a restraint and seclusion. So I'm actually working with the Office of the Child Advocate and Dr. Green on some legislation, if I get elected again, to, instead of spending hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on body cameras to do some preventive work and maybe tie some grant money to it. But it sounds like, like this is something that's coming, this increased focus by the state on how districts are handling our special education. It's really focused on the special education students, and when they have these kind of behavioral outbursts that make themselves or other people around them unsafe. And I, I have been really talking up Nashua and the work that Nashua has done at creating the form, making our form a little bit more extensive than what the law requires. And really, Nashua's work that Mr. Alexander already said that we have done with Dr. Green to support some of our staff and having him come back. So, um, so it's been a heavy couple of weeks with that. But I, I, it's really exciting for me to be on the board, but also hearing from the district about how Nashua is kind of taking this stuff seriously and responding to parents' concerns. And hopefully, we can continue to do that. Yay, State House stuff.
Um, I have no comment tonight. It was a very productive night, but I have no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Darling?
I was gonna rant about transportation, because this was the second time where I've been at work receiving texts and phone calls an hour after my kid was dropped off, like supposed to be dropped off, that he's still at the school. I know I'm not the only parent dealing with it. My whole complex is dealing with it. I do know that, obviously, y'all are working on it. So more bringing it up, because it keeps being brought up to me and affecting me. As for everything else in life, um.
It's okay to have no comment.
No, 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 I have a comment. I'm just trying to find a way to put it in nice words. We have a form, it's a great form, it's a beautiful form. We approved the form. It was supposed to be in use as of June, July, July. We are now, it's October tomorrow. Has that form gone online yet? Yes, it has? Okay, so then I would love to find out about the last seclusion that my own child was in and why that form wasn't used for it. Because if we're not utilizing the policies we create, we are not putting the safety of our children first. We are not improving on our seclusion and restraints yet. I do see that we are trying. I see that we are pairing up with Dr. Green, that's great. And I really hope that we stop doing, you know, staff-to-staff PD, and we do keep bringing in more of these professionals, because that's the only way that we're, we're going to improve, is better education for ourselves. But I did want to give a massive shout-out to every one of the parents that have done the phone calls this week to First Student and to the First Student Dispatch, who has received those phone calls. I know that I have given at least two phone calls where I was in tears, just so angry about the whole situation. And I'm a generally pretty patient person, and it wasn't like it was affecting like my job. I know for some parents it is. So I really appreciate the people at Dispatch for maintaining their professionalism. And I know the woman I spoke to, she was nothing but calming and sweet and very like, I am so sorry, yes, communication is something we need to improve. And I'm, I was gonna say, they, the people who are taking the punches definitely deserve a pat on the back, because they don't get enough of it. And I don't know about you guys, but I'm pretty angry before my coffee in the morning. So I don't know how they do it, but that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Darling. Mr. Claffey?
No comment.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
I'm just pleased to hear all the things that we're doing in the district, the things that we're bringing to the district, and how we're supporting our teachers. And hopefully, we'll continue to do so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Prin?
No comment.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, I just wanted to thank the district for setting up our email accounts. I've already seen a huge difference in just the, the one week of getting the correspondence that, um, you know, was going by the wayside before. And now it's definitely helpful. And like, thank the administration for doing that.
Thank you. I also want to piggyback off of what Ms. Darling said about, about patting people on the back for, for dealing with unprecedented circumstances in regards to transportation, but not just central office. I know I've been singing your praises about responding to emails and phone calls, but the actual bus drivers who have been managing all of the shifts and all of the changes and getting to know new students and new parents and new routes. I think there are times that we often forget to say thank you to the people who ensure that our kids get to school. They're the foundation blocks to, to getting our students where they need to be. And I know they're taking a lot of the brunt for what's been going on, but I just want to say thank you to them as well for being accommodating and flexible, and for sharing ways in which that we can make improvements. Because we can't get better if we don't recognize where the opportunities for change are. So I want to, I want to thank them and give them a pat on the back for also managing these kind of extraordinary circumstances. And I'm glad we're winding down, and the emails are less, and the calls are less, and the Google spreadsheet is getting less hits. So just very, very proud of us for, for moving through that. That is all I have to say.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, so Ms. Gilio makes the motion. Ms. Daniels.
I got you.
Yeah, you didn't, you didn't finish. Ms. Daniels-Williams, seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, I was presuming, aye, guys. Motion passes, we are adjourned at 8:09 PM.